Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand twenty four, six P. M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. We have Father Tom Jones here with the Church of the Holy Spirit at thirteen oh five Thomas Drive. Please silence your phones and stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather to conduct the business of our city, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Give our City Council members discerning hearts as they listen to those who offer witness about the issues at hand and enable those who approach the council to state clearly their thoughts and concerns so that our council may fully understand and properly assess the community impact of the options before them. Guide our council to make wise decisions in the work they do this day, that the choices they make are with right intentions, with a mind towards the proper stewardship of the public resources which they have been entrusted with in the best interest of those they serve. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of our fine city is more important than our differences so that, working together, we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey and those who depend upon us to act faithfully and responsibly. Lord, on this night, we remember and give thanks for the blessings you shared with us in the life of Marliese. We lift up those who knew her and now grieve her passing, especially Susan, our city clerk, and her family and the Fulton family. Finally, Lord, bless all those who gather in this place that all may know your love and grace and knowing it, embrace it, share it, and let it be what guides us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen. Thank you, Father Jones. Call the meeting to order. Shirley, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey. Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda, Claims and Advisory Committee Reports, five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion that I'd like to make an amendment. I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second. Motion by Cook, second by Preister. And Councilman Cook?
That I would like to make an amendment that we move items sixteen N, sixteen O, sixteen P above, move it above sixteen B.
Second. Okay. Motion by Cook, second by Preister to amend the agenda by moving sixteen N, sixteen O, and sixteen P in front of sixteen B on the agenda. Any other comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. And I have a motion by Cook, second by Preister to approve the agenda and now as amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Hmm, give me one second, sorry. I'll just do a roll call vote. Councilman Casey?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
McCaw?
Yes.
Councilman Preister?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Casey, or Welch?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an ask risk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor? All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item seven, we have no special presentations. Item eight, no organizational matters this evening. Item nine, approved citizen communication. Nine A, Mr. Frank Plummer. Subject is install paved multipurpose pathway with signage. So is Mr. Plummer here?
Yes.
Yep. Just come to the podium, please. State your name and address and sign in. And if you can limit your talk to five minutes or less, that'd be great.
Okay, will do. Oh, good evening. My name is Frank Plummer. My address is one zero one zero two South Fourteenth Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one two three. And my topic is installing a multipurpose pathway. The purpose of the pathway is for residents living north of Cornhusker, east of Kennedy Freeway, and west of Fort Crook Road to safely connect to the Bellevue Loop, the Keystone, and the Papio multipurpose trails by cycling, running, or walking. The proposed pathway is, would be separated from motor vehicle traffic, be ten feet wide and one mile in length. The path would begin at the southeast corner of Thurston Avenue and Fifteenth Street, proceed south on Fifteenth Street until Fifteenth Street turns into Hogan Town Drive and continue on Hogan Town Drive and end at about seventeen oh one Hogan Town Drive. Funding, the bipartisan infrastructure law, or its other name is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, provides grants to local governments to design and build such a trail. Additionally, or something else to consider, Sarpy County Public Works is working on a solution to address a safety hazard for cycling, walking, or running along South Twenty Fifth Street, which is, and the portion is just south of Brook Park in Willow Springs area to the Keystone Trail. And Sarpy County Public Works is focused on a pathway through the floodway that areas south of Willow Springs and to, and to the Papio Creek. So, the topic that I'm presenting to you along with Sarpy County's solution would result in an interconnecting pathway. The benefit of constructing such a pathway would connect communities. The Avery Hills, primarily the Avery Hills and Avery North neighborhood just north of Cornhusker, Willow Springs, Brook, Brook Park, and other areas south of the Papio Creek. That is my topic and think I might still have some time. So if anyone has any questions about what I've stated, I can answer those.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Plummer. I appreciate what you're bringing to us. Are you aware that we have complete streets approved in Bellevue and that our planning department has some citizens like yourself who are active with that group? And they look at these kinds of routes and connectivity? And you might check, not tonight, but when Ms. Palm is here in the planning department about some of what they may already be working on.
Okay. No, I was unaware of that group and I'd be happy to, to communicate with them and contribute to their efforts.
I'm sorry. She's right here. I'm looking over there and forgot.
She's subbing tonight.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but...
So Tammy, would you just reach out to, maybe just reach out to Mr. Plummer and... Oh, she's already got her number written down, so. Try to get him connected because we are, those routes and trails are very important to us and we are trying to connect various things, so your input is very important. And you certainly can give a lot more input if you get involved in, in those groups, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for your time.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Item ten, no liquor license applications this evening. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four one five three, request to rezone Lot Two, Mankies, second addition from BG to MU for the purpose of a mixed-use development with site plan approval. Applicant Housing Foundation for Sarpy County. General location, twenty two oh two Pleasant View Lane. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number four one four six by changing the zone classification of land located at or about two two zero two Pleasant View Lane, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number forty one fifty three.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Cook, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to, to thank the Housing Foundation and specifically Carolyn for all the great work she does and, and bringing affordable housing to Bellevue because I think probably everybody in this room knows that is a huge need for Bellevue. I'd also like to thank the citizens, the residents who live in that general neighborhood for sharing your concerns and your questions. Sometimes you always don't get the answer you want, but I assure you this council listens and, and we've evaluated and there's been a lot of time spent looking at, at this specific issue. You know, these decisions are never easy. They're tough ones when you have competing, competing interests. In this case, the need for affordable housing, but then also the, the need to, to listen to and, and protect the properties of the citizens who live when these new developments come about. So personally, I'm okay with the zoning change from, from BG to mixed use. I think that's appropriate, looking at the Fort Crook Corridor Plan. I think it certainly goes hand in hand with that. My concern with this project is simply just the height of the building. I believe a four-story building, granted, three stories on the east and, and the northeast side where the existing homes currently are. We're only looking at three stories and then, and then a roof line, but it's right in their backyard. And I believe that the current design does impact the current residents, negatively impact the residents and, and you could argue maybe affects their quality of life. So with all that said, I'm, I'm a no vote on this project, but I truly wanted just to make sure that Carolyn knows that I do appreciate what she does. I think it's a great project. It's groundbreaking to do mixed use for, for low-income housing. I wish you all the best. I just personally, this, this might be the wrong spot for it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want the public also to know that there are, there are letters and phone calls. Obviously, we answered the phone calls, but that we were listening, we were reading. We've got another letter that's here tonight that I had already read online. I believe that all of the concerns, well, the majority have had some addressing and the one that's pretty tough to address is the location of the trash container. And I don't see that as a big issue as long as people keep it relatively clean. There are a lot of businesses that have trash containers right next to their business and if it were going to be a problem, they wouldn't keep it so close to their business or to their door. So that one is tough. The one other one that I heard and can certainly be sensitive to is the outdoor activities and the music. And on, in our packet was written that the applicant has suggested removing that. So I think that takes away the music venue and the outdoor activities as a compromise, which I appreciate also Carolyn doing. The school children living there and having no place to play with parks, I can be sensitive to as well. However, Carolyn said in answering that question at our last meeting that there are a limited number of two-bedroom apartments, I believe only four, maybe one or two more than that, but that her intention was not to rent to people who had children to begin with. So I don't see it as a real issue for many children living there and not having a place to play, although I think that is certainly a valid and important consideration. I believe that as many as possible of the concerns, other than perhaps the height, and we have approved higher buildings, higher than this, above other locations. And so with this one, I see the need for affordable housing. I see our Sarpy habitat so important and so necessary and needed that I, as sensitive as I may be to some of these other issues, I've decided to vote in support.
Any other comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this property is in my ward and it is a fine line of us trying to decide what's best for the community. It's the challenge of finding the affordable housing, which we need so badly in our area, yet where do we put it? And I feel like with the Fort Court, Fort Crook Corridor Plan, this starts, starts the spark of that to be able to create that plan that we see happening probably way beyond when we will be here. You know, we have talked about this project among the council members in many ways and questioning what's in the best interest, what, what's the right thing to do. And I think it, it's, change is never easy, but we do want to create that affordable housing because with everything else going up, housing is getting really expensive even in Bellevue. So with that being said, I'm also going to vote for this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember?
Just like Councilman Casey said, I do want to thank Carolyn for all her hard work because she does a lot. And I also concur with what Councilwoman Welch just said, which is, it does put us in like a very difficult spot. And I, I know that there is a huge need for affordable housing and I want to see that in our city. And then on the flip side of that, I'm also very sensitive to, to how it does impact neighbors because I think that's, that's really the whole purpose is, is, you know, is to represent our constituents and to listen and to really follow that up with action. So just given that, that I do believe that there is going to be a negative impact on neighbors who were there first, I'm gonna vote with Councilwoman Casey on this and vote no, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I just want to add, listening to what the council members had to say, our comprehensive plan, our future use plans, those are, we spend a lot of hours and a lot of years developing these plans and that's, it's very important that the public gets their input put into those plans. Tens of thousands of dollars go into these plans, a lot of time. There's a lot of effort to go into these. And we, we try to consider all those and it's up to the public to, you know, give their input at those times because plans do affect you. I'm a, I'm, I'm a firm believer in just trying to stick to that vision, stick to a plan, make the best one we can and, and live by that. And there's, there's always situations, but I think, I don't think there's anything unique about development and change. This is, this is, this is, this gets us going in that right, that direction that, that prior councils, mayors, public bodies have, have all agreed to. So I just wanted to make that statement, so. If there's no other comments or questions, we have a motion by Cook, second by Preister to approve eleven A. Please vote.
The vote is four yes votes, two no votes, with Councilman Casey and Councilman Burns voting no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven A one, request to approve the mixed-use development agreement for Lot Two, Mankies Second Edition, Applicant Housing Foundation of Sarpy County. General location, twenty two oh two Pleasant View Lane. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item eleven A one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
The vote is four to two with Councilman Casey and Councilman Burns voting no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance number four one five four, request to amend Section eight dot oh three dot oh six, city of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding hard-surface parking. Applicant city of Bellevue. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance to amend Section eight point zero three point zero six of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska zoning ordinance regarding hard-surface parking in residential areas for the city of Bellevue, Nebraska to provide for the repeal of ordinances inconsistent herewith and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for eleven B? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve item, or sorry, ordinance number four one five four.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Eleven C, ordinance number four one five five, request to amend Section seven dot oh four dot oh three, seven, city of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding billboard signs, applicant city of Bellevue. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend Section seven point zero four zero three of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska zoning ordinance regarding billboard signs for the city of Bellevue, Nebraska to provide for the repeal of ordinances inconsistent herewith and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for eleven C? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve ordinance number forty one fifty five.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item eleven D, ordinance number four one five six, amend Chapter eighteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending Section eighteen dash seventy six pertaining to parking of recreational vehicles, trailers, and boats. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one five six, an ordinance to amend Chapter eighteen of Bellevue Municipal Code by amending Section eighteen dash seven six regarding parking of recreational vehicles, trailers, and boats and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for eleven D? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four one five six.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item twelve A, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four one five seven, compensation ordinance update. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one five seven, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number four one three five, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And I will open up twelve A for public hearing and looks like we already have an experienced public speaker up here, so just state your name, address, and try to hold it to five minutes.
Brian Hanson, two seven oh four Georgia Avenue in Bellevue. You have one who wanted to economize by getting signed in without wasting everybody's time. I want to talk two aspects of this agenda item. First, the legality of it, and the second to the ordinance itself. Last meeting, this ordinance was introduced and it was condensed at the, at the onset and the public notice, et cetera, for the agenda item. And the presiding officer, Mr. Mayor, said it is just now the first reading. I continue to harp about this topic that the city of Bellevue does not introduce ordinances like other cities do. If you go to Papillion, if you go to Omaha, if you go to the state legislature, a member of the legislating body, i.e. a council member, has to be the initiator or the introducer at the first reading. We don't do that here for some reason and I'm going to chat with some people about that. So I'm kind of unclear where the mayor got his authority to unilaterally. He wasn't on the, the documents that pushed through just arbitrarily say it's, this is just the first reading. And I see in the minutes, there was no motion, there was no legislative action to say, to amend that, to say, yes, we agree because it already hit the legislative process, i.e. the council, for a hearing and it was going to all be condensed. But the minutes don't reflect that. The minutes just, and I looked at the video, it just says, well, that's the first entered, the first reading and the second reading was obviously tonight and the third reading is at a subsequent date. So I don't know where legally this stands. I don't think, I think the, the ordinance became moot last meeting when it wasn't acted upon as specified it would be in the agenda and in the notice to the public. So that's something to think about. I think it's, I think it's illegally pushing to the second meeting. This would be, if it had been amended last week to say we're going to have three readings spread out, good to go this week, but I think it's a moot ordinance right now. Now to the substance of the ordinance. I don't see Rick Severson and stuff, but I just, no disrespect intended to Rick Severson. I respect him a lot. I think he is in a potentially compromised situation by being the proponent of this ordinance as the finance director. He would also be relied upon to be the analyst or expert to consult on it as to where it is and he's also beneficiary of it. I think that puts him in a compromising position and unintentionally, but it still is in a compromising position for Mr. Severson. And again, no disrespect to Mr. Severson at all. I respect his abilities and I respect him as a person, but I think it's, I think it's a compromising situation. It should have been put forth by... I think it's, uh, I think it's a compromising situation. It should've been put forth by the mayor. Or the city administrator or the personnel director, whomever like that, who says that. You know, salaries are falling behind, et cetera. Then we go to the meat and potatoes of the ordinance and we see that most of the red lines affect. Salaries for the quote-unquote executive level or senior level staff, but yet the. Summary sheet says, we have a, a dearth of people leaving these jobs. I'm unaware of anybody leaving these jobs and that there's a, that there's a lack of, of people wanting to fulfill them or that. People are unhappy with that. Sure, everybody likes to get a pay raise, I would too, but when my taxes go up the way they did last year, uh. That's kind of out of the question and so. Uh, we have some, uh, senior members of the staff who haven't even been here for a year and. Already up for a second pay raise. I don't know if that's necessary, but, you know, six-digit salaries, I'm sorry, I'm not convinced that this is really appropriate. For these, uh, levels, but again, I summarize just by saying, again, I think this is, uh. Ordinance which is illegally pushed forward and became moot at the last council meeting and should've been reintroduced. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding twelve A? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding twelve A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing on twelve A. And, um, just, uh, I know Amy has looked up, looked at the. Legality side of this and I think we're clear on that. I don't know if Ryan would have anything to add at this point, but. Um, so, we're comfortable with that. Um, and I, I don't know if there's any reason to look at anything else before the next meeting, but. Um, so it has, it ha, we are comfortable with that. The, um. I think he'd mentioned that, uh, this was brought forward by finance director, it was actually brought forward by Ashley, the hu- human resource director. And then, yeah, salaries are, you know, s- uh, subject to, yep, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll just make one comment. Um. Mr. Hanson was referring to it's moot after last week, we were trying to condense it. All we had was a first reading with a recommendation of waiving the other readings. And we, the council did not accept that, so we had the first reading and now we're at the second reading. And then, our next meeting will be June fourth, which, you know, will be the likelihood of a, of a, a vote and if something is continued or changed, but. I, I don't know. I, I, I think we're safe, it was simply a recommendation to waive and we, the council didn't accept it. So, we went to the second reading tonight and then we'll go to the third reading, that's. That's all we did on, as far as, I think he was referring to a word, trying to condense it. I. We had a, we, we had a recommendation, the council didn't agree with it, so we went to the second and eventually we'll get to the third reading.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments and we did get the letter and information last meeting and we did do some follow-up. The legal question, I agree with Council President Cook. The normal procedure is three readings on all ordinances. This is the second reading following that first one. It was only a recommendation to vote, have the public heari- have the public hearing, then vote last time. But the council pretty much unanimously agreed before the meeting individually, not as a discussion. That we shouldn't do that, so we didn't. We. Advanced it on to this meeting and I believe that follows all requirements. For what the legislature has to do. I also followed up and. Requested a legal opinion from our legal counsel about whether or not. All, all ordinances would have to be introduced by a council member because I believed that that had va- validity. Our legal counsel advised that for our city, for a first-class city. That is not required. That was a little bit of a surprise to me, but I have to respect the legal opinion on that. Uh, we may look further and I may try to get more clarity than what we've got. The other issue was whether or not there's a conflict of interest for Mr. Severson. And I did ask Mr. Severson about that. He was not the introducer, it did come out of. Our, uh, HR department and it was going to be introduced, but the director couldn't be here. So, kind of at the last minute, she asked Mr. Severson if he would introduce it. If that's not totally accurate, anybody can certainly correct me. But it was only his name that was on it because he was going to be here and he was willing to accept it. Having been a part of the discussions and knowing what was involved. So, I don't see any particular issues or legalities with this. But I do appreciate them being raised, so we can check on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, the public hearings closed, no more comments, so the third reading will be June fourth. Two thousand twenty-four at six P M. Here in the council chambers. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A. Recommendation to approve event application for Omaha Masonic Lodge number two-eighty-eight for the Cars for a Cause Event to Benefit. The Nebraska Humane Society on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, from seven o'clock A M. To three o'clock P M. At one-seven-two-four Willshire Drive. And do I have, open up the public hearing, is there anyone wanting to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward? Anybody regarding fourteen A that wants to talk, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item fourteen A.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two-zero-two-four dash ten. Request to approve the redevelopment plan for lot two, Bellevue Replat Three, applicant Franklin Flats LLC. General location, two-zero-zero-nine Franklin Street. And I will open up the public hearing for fifteen A. Is there anyone here wanting to speak?
Elizabeth Sevcek, uh, twenty-one-twenty South Seventy-second Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This is for lot two Bellevue Replat Three, which is at the northeast corner of the twenty, of Twenty-first Avenue in Franklin, it's about a block north of the old town core area. Um, currently, there is about a nine-thousand-two-hundred square foot building there that was built in the nineteen fifties and it's re. Used to be a daycare and it's remained vacant for quite some time. The property to the north was redeveloped into twelve town home-style apartments, but that. Building still sits vacant, so the plan, uh, is to renovate six thousand square feet of that as a daycare with some outside space. And then add nine apartments, two of those would be ADA accessible and on the ground level. And then seven of those would be added to a newly constructed second floor. Uh, there's onsite parking at the site and then there'd be additional parking added. The construction would start in the fall, if this is approved, with completion in the spring of two thousand twenty-five. There's about at least six hundred thousand dollars in, uh, TIF eligible costs. And the request is for four-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars of those eligible. Costs, which is supported by what the estimate is for the final assessed value. Without TIF, um, the project just won't be economically feasible, there's not enough return on investment in order to make it go forward. But this, I think. If you look at the designs that were submitted and with the application, it would be a great benefit, um, to this area. Bringing a daycare to support the residents who live there and also resident, that people who may be working in the area will also be a huge benefit. Um, and kinda help, this has already been designated previously as. Blighted and substandard and so this is gonna help raise the standard of that area and continue to raise it, so my client is excited to. Hopefully, um, work on this project as well and move that forward. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this idea on this project. I noticed that those nine units are each gonna be two-bedroom apartments, is that correct?
I believe so.
And do you know the square footage of those apartments?
Uh, well, it would be, let's see, the building itself is nine-thousand-two-hundred, so. The two on the bottom, there's thirty-two-hundred remaining square feet, so the two ADA ones on the bottom would be, um. Sixteen-hundred square feet.
Okay.
And then the ninety-two-hundred divided by seven.
Do your math. Understand.
About the same, I think, yeah.
About twelve hundred, we're thinking, okay, and do we know what the, are those gonna be. Uh, affordable housing or are they going to be, uh, what the premium rent rate is or have we talked about what that's gonna do there?
Uh, we haven't talked about it. Um, I think the idea is to keep it relatively affordable. And, um, consistent with, you know, I think the townhouses are maybe a step nicer, but, um. Yeah, he hasn't indicated one way or another.
Okay, would just be interesting to know, just for the public, to know when those are coming down, that they, oh, there's a place I could live and I could afford it and that type of thing, so. And there's no garages or anything with those, correct, cuz everything is contained in that building with the daycare?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so outside parking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Tammy, just a quick question on that six thousand square foot, uh, service bay, is that? That can never be shrunk down beyond the six thousand, right, for more residential?
Correct, so what they're showing in the redevelopment plan is what they would have to do unless that plan were amended.
Alright, thanks. Alright, public hearing is still open, is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward? Fifteen A, sorry, public hearing is open on fifteen A, still. Anybody wanting to speak, please come forward. Okay, seeing nobody else, I will close the public hearing and, uh, is there a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-two-four dash ten.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution number two-zero-two-four dash eleven, approve to adopt the construction manager at-risk. Delivery system for the construction of a water park on the northwest corner of Highway thirty-four and Highway seventy-five. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-four dash eleven.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions on fifteen B? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen N. Sixteen is current business, sixteen N, approve and authorize the purchase of pre-construction aluminum supplies. From open air in an amount not to exceed two million three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion we approve item sixteen N.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen O. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for design and engineering services from Harlem Basham Architects. For the city water park in an amount not to exceed three million four-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen O.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd just like to, uh, publicly thank Mr. Johnson and the staff for all the work, uh, it's a major project and. I'm, I'm thoroughly amazed at, uh, how much time you've put into this and to make this work and it's a very complicated process, but. I think you gotta handle it, so, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. And congratulations, Harrison. He's got a new, uh, he's got a new nephew, so, two hours ago. Any other questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen P, approve purchase of two thousand twenty-four Ford Ranger XL. Four-wheel-drive Super Crew from Woodhouse Ford and Blair in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. To replace a two thousand thirteen Chevy fifteen hundred due to oil consumption and, and a hundred and sixty-nine thousand miles. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen P.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Back to sixteen B. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the substitution of trustee and deed of reconvenance for thirty-seven twenty-eight Gale Avenue. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, make a motion to approve item sixteen B.
Motion by Casey, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding. With the Civilian Employee Association of Bellevue to reflect new compensation. Effective the remaining term of the current bargaining agreement, ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move this to our June fourth council meeting.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister, to move to the June fourth council meeting. Any comments or questions on that? Councilman Preister.
Just a little bit of a follow-up. We were asked to not accelerate last meeting. The first one that we had the discussion on earlier of compensation. Rather than accelerate, we, through Council President Cook's leadership, we're holding everything back. So, we're granting additional time rather than speeding anything up and that's why we're holding this back. So, they all pass at the same time. If they pass, at least they're voted on and consistently together. That was the goal.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other comments or questions? Motion by Cook, second by Preister, to, uh, put the vote off on sixteen C to the June fourth. Council meeting. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Bellevue Professional Management Association. To reflect new compensation, effective the remaining term of the current bargaining agreement, ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, and because of the previous one, I'll make a motion that we move this to our June fourth council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. To move sixteen D vote to the next meeting on June fourth. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Shimmer, uh, Shimmer and Associates. In the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, thirty-five dollars. For professional engineering design services for reconstruction project, Fontanelle Hills. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Motion, motion to approve up item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with H G M Associates. In the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars for professional construction engineering services. For the two thousand twenty-four concrete projects, package one and two. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the. Thank you. Item sixteen G. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperation act agreement for the Papillion Creek watershed partnership in partnership with cities of Bellevue, Gretna, La Vista, Omaha, Rolston, Sarpy County and Village of Boystown for implementing common standards for development of cost sharing of the watershed of Papillion Creek. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen G.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen H. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Alfred Benish for professional services for construction and administration, observation, testing and support services in the amount of thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars for the two thousand twenty-four C D B G sidewalk improvement project. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Oh, not H. Gosh, I just got those.
Sixteen H. Uh, motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen I. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Burl Enterprises LLC in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars plus a ten percent contingency of fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars for a total project cost of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars for the C D B G sidewalk improvement project. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item sixteen I, as you just read.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen J. Approve final payment of two thousand twenty-three overlay project in the amount of two hundred and one thousand, sixty-three dollars and one cent. Approve final change order in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents to account for contract overrun and approve the project as substantially complete and accept final project quantities. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve item sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen K. Approve option three per R F seventeen in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. All-purpose construction to complete electrical upgrades and to approve to pay M U D in the amount of three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars for gas service work for the odorant building renovation at North Street Department Shop located at eighty-two fifty-two Cedar Island Road. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen K.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Sixteen L. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the franchise agreement fourth addendum for residential solid waste, recyclable materials and yard waste with waste connections doing business as Papillion Sanitation in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and six dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve item sixteen L.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to take this opportunity to highlight a little bit. I think we've had a good contract. We've been collecting recyclables. It's been a pay-as-you throw. If you recycle more, you get to pay less. You get to switch your card out to a smaller or larger size once a year. If you move in, you can select. I think Papillion Sanitation has done a good job. I think we've got good service. And we have increased our recycling rate, which is real important to me. What concerns me is that we continue that. And currently, I'm told that we've started slipping on our recycling rate. So I'm hoping and I'm encouraging the public to begin to be more educated on recycling and to do more recycling. And particularly of plastics, and I just want to read. Scientists have been concerned about possible harm from micro, microplastics for many years. In a new study, researchers developed a method of detecting microplastics in human blood. The scientists found microplastics in four common plastics, of four common plastics in blood samples from seventeen out of twenty-two healthy adults. We are already identifying that microplastics are in the air that we breathe, which is the most important life force we have. It's already in our water, which is the next most important life force energy that we have. And we know it's in our ground. So it's no surprise that it's already in our bloodstream. Microplastics are in our clothes, the nylons and the petroleum-based products. We have polluted our oceans. Plastic is everywhere. We can't escape it. But we can be more responsible with it. One way we do that is through the Orange Energy Bag. And we piloted that program here in Bellevue, which I'm proud that we promoted and helped to get implemented for those very hard to recycle plastics. So I hope people will use the Orange re-energized bag. It's gotten a, a new name and it's gotten some new life. But it's not used a lot and part of the reason I hear is because people don't know for sure where it's going. So I'm hopeful that all of our bags will go to actually make an end product and not go to where they first were going. One was a cement kiln and the other was to fire up a generator for energy. Those are not necessarily bad uses, but they're not an actual product. And going into a product, I believe, is much more preferable. So I'm hoping with this contract, with some additional education, the public can be informed about recycling especially but the orange bag es- essentially because of the hard-to-recycle plastic bottle caps and pieces of little plastic that normally just get thrown in the trash. Part of the reason that's important, we have ninety-three counties in this state. The last I saw on the website for Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy, there are only twenty-three licensed landfills in the entire state. That's one for every three counties. The old landfill on Cedar Island Road that filled years ago is closed and sitting and we aren't doing anything with it. It just has to be managed. We then recited a new landfill through the county. That's been filled for six years. The county was not able to cite a new landfill anywhere in Sarpy County. That's not all bad because we shouldn't be putting our garbage in good farm ground or developable ground. So it's important when we can't cite landfills, what's going to happen when we can't ship our waste out to Butler County in a private landfill? That's where all Sarpy County waste, nearly all, has been going for the length of this contract, the last six years. So we've got the additional shipping expense of all that waste going out there. And it doesn't all have to. Those recycling bins are so large, ninety percent of what people throw away could be either composted or recycled. And we did a study in a grocery store and ninety percent of all the products in the grocery store, I'm not talking about the meat, but all the packaged products and all the things on the shelves in a grocery store are recyclable. So why are we throwing all this away when we're filling landfills that we shouldn't be filling, don't need to be filling, taking away good farm ground? I'm not wanting to be preachy. I'm trying to be educational because I think it's essential that we take responsibility for our children's future and we do more to recycle so that the things that can be recycled are. I see every week plastic bags going into the recycling bins. There should be no plastic bags other than the Orange Energy Bag going into a recycling bin. Those plastic bags gum up the rollers in the MRF, the Materials Recovery Site. Those plastic bags should only be in either an orange bag or they should be recycled separately. So please, I send out the request, the challenge to the public. Please recycle, recycle responsibly, learn what can go into the Orange Energy Bag. Come to the farmer's market each Saturday. I will help to instruct you. We can do better and I know Bellevue residents want to do better. And I welcome any other comments.
Thank you for that education.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay, a motion by Preister, second by Burns on sixteen L. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen M. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Midwest D C M in the amount of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred dollars plus a ten percent contingency of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars for a total project cost of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for the Stonecroft Park restroom and sanitary sewer lift station. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen M and also have a comment at the appropriate time.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Councilman Casey?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, following the, the last council meeting, after getting over the shock and awe of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for a restroom, I asked that we delay this uh, vote till this meeting so that the city could do some uh, further evaluation of the cost and, and the need. Um, I appreciate uh, Public Works and, and Administration for, for doing that and, and Council President Cook also for his work on that. So all that said, I, I'm now satisfied that the, the cost, although it's, still sounds crazy, is appropriate. Uh, when the staff looked at other options, we found that bringing in a modular unit would end up being almost expensive, but not as expensive as, as a uh, building it from ground up. So cost-wise, I think unfortunately we're stuck at, at somewhere in that price range due to the extenuating circumstances of that particular restroom. Uh, in reference to the need, uh, that was my biggest concern. I've heard from many citizens and, and staff that there really is that need. Uh, and so I, I'm convinced now that there really is, is a need. So I'm in favor of, of approving this.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Alright. Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item seventeen, Administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. May report will be attached for the June fourth council packet. We have no closed session. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thanks, everyone.